I know, but it's okay to not can you go in there and say, oh, I did it. It's like, obviously, we think he. He could say. I think. Yeah. I've been inspiring.
Uh. Can we call the meeting to order? Are we in shape to call the meeting to order?
Yes.
Okay, please rise. We'll, I'm gonna ask Mr. Miranda to say the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. In case some of you are gonna wonder about the next three to five minutes, this is a formal meeting. It's open. It's obviously open to the public, but there's a bunch of stuff we have to go through to, because it is a formal meeting. So could we hear our call of the roll, please?
Commissioner Barber. Commissioner McReynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Reeland.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner Capen.
Here.
Commissioner McGee. Excuse. Chair, we have a, we have a.
Thank you.
Form.
I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve has submitted.
Second.
Second. All the roll.
Commissioner Barber.
I approve.
Commissioner McReynolds.
I approve.
Commissioner Reeland. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yep.
Commissioner Capen. Mr. Chair, the motion's passed.
And now we need approval of the consent agenda. May I hear a motion? So if there's not a consent agenda, we don't have to approve it. Well, that's phenomenal. Doesn't sound like Santa Fe to me, but that's okay. Um, approval of minutes of the last meeting. I hear a motion. Oh, September, oh, I have to say exactly, September 4, 2025 study session.
Move to approve minutes from September 4th, 2025 study session.
All the roll, please.
Commissioner Barber. Commissioner McReynolds.
I was absent, so I will abstain.
Commissioner Reeland. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda.
Yes, apart from the case I abstained from.
Commissioner Capen.
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of minutes of the formal commission meeting of September 4th, yes.
Let me see if I have a.
Yes.
Motion. That was a yes. The abstain, yes, yes, yes. You. You abstained?
One, two, three, four. Oh, right. I, yes.
So, so it passed, but be thinking about the fact that Mr. Miranda was here for the entire meeting, but he had to step out for one gen.
I, I remember.
Okay.
For this item, uh, Mr. Chair, the motion's passed.
Yes. May I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the official meeting of September 4th?
Move to approve minutes of September 4th, 2025.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Barber. Commissioner McReynolds.
Abstain.
Commissioner Reeland. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Miranda.
Abstain.
Commissioner Capen.
Yes.
That is or. The motion has not passed.
Is he allowed to, to approve the minutes other than the section for which he was?
Um, thank you, Chair Smith. Uh, he can approve all of them if he's reviewed. Like, he just needs to check it for accuracy, so it's not substantive, so he can approve for all of it.
Friendly amendment, then. Uh, uh, yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion's passed.
But good. Okay, approval of findings. Do we need to approve findings and conclusions at this point?
I don't believe we put any findings on. We pushed them off to the October 2nd.
And the, that's right. And the consent agenda.
There's no consent agenda.
Old business, new business.
Uh, for this meeting, the new business, I would, um.
I was, I was gonna come next. So I will turn it over to Jessica, please.
Janice Balatnikoff with the Planning and Land Use Department. I'll just give a brief introduction this evening before we, before we head into the evening's events for today's study session. In front of you, each of you has received a copy of the final assessment report, which was the stage gate one closing item for the Santa Fe Forward General Plan Update Planning Process. I thank you for your input previously on the formation of this document, and this is a major milestone to be celebrated, that we are closing out stage gate one and entering into phase two of this process, which is the visioning phase of the general plan update. Tonight, before we enter into the, the study session workshop events, in which we'll have two breakout group activities to ascertain your vision and your ideas for the, the general plan as it moves forward. Uh, we will be receiving a presentation from our consultants at WSP. Uh, they will give you the highlights of the very large document that is in front of you and the key findings as it informs this next phase of the planning process. So with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Nick Fazio of WSP and Ms. Amy DiCarlo Antonio of WSP also. Thank you.
Hey, Janice. Can you guys hear me okay? Is that working for everyone? Okay, great. Thank you, Janice, again, and thank you, Chair Smith, and the rest of the planning commission. We're excited to be here with you tonight. We've got a presentation that we're gonna share, and there it is. Um, yes, and me and my colleague, Amy, from WSP, are excited to present uh, the assessment report, which is a really significant milestone and achievement, the Santa Fe Forward project. Um, so lots to get into, uh, but as a quick review of the agenda, um, welcome and introductions. I'll go ahead and introduce myself, and then when Amy comes on to speak, Amy will introduce herself. But my name is Nick Fazio. I am a planner, as well as the Regional Practice Lead for the Communications Advisory Services Practice for a company called WSP. We're one of the world's largest engineering firms, um, but we do have local operations here in New Mexico. I personally sit in the Albuquerque office, born and raised, so glad to be working on a local project, and we're supporting the city of Santa Fe on this really iconic and exciting project. Um, we're gonna go through a quick background. We're gonna talk a little bit about the purpose and the process of the general plan update. I know you're all well aware of the purpose of a general plan, but for the benefit of the public that may be watching, want them to have those details available to them. We'll talk a little bit about what our process was in working with the city to develop the assessment report, including some of the initial stages that we went through, as well as a high-level summary of the public involvement that was conducted. And then at that point, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Amy. Amy will present a really high-level overview of the key findings. Of course, you can see how large the document is in front of you, so we're just gonna barely skim the surface here tonight, um, but we remain available and happy to talk to you one-on-one, answer questions if you have those at any time. Then we'll talk a little bit about next steps after you've had a chance to ask us a few questions. Um, and then, as Janice mentioned, we also have a, an exciting visioning charrette that we're gonna be conducting here this evening. Um, that is primarily for you, the planning commissioners, as well as our special invitees, the technical working group members. Um, and I will provide more details about how that visioning charrette will work for the rest of the evening, once we get to close of our presentation. Uh, real quickly, why update the general plan? Um, as you all are well aware, a general plan is often called a comprehensive plan, but many communities in the United States have a general plan, and the purpose is really to establish that collective vision for a given, given community. In this case, the city of Santa Fe. Um, oftentimes, they're required by law. Um, but really, they're, they're a good idea to have, even when they're not required by law, because they establish sort of a long-term roadmap or a guide that sets priorities and values for the community moving forward. And in the general plan, typically, it includes, um, vision statements. It includes policy goals and objectives, and in that way, it really sort of lays out what does the community want for itself over a given, you know, future time horizon? And more importantly, what are those implementation steps that are gonna be necessary to achieve that collective vision? So the need, um, Santa Fe does have a general plan. It was adopted in 1999, and it has been updated since, though not substantively. So this is the first really substantive update for the general plan in more than a quarter of a century. Um, of course, the landscape and the world that we live in today has changed significantly. Now, one of the things that we did when we started talking with the city and reviewing the 1999 general plan is that a lot of those core values that were developed by the community that appear in that 1999 general plan, they are still relevant, right? Santa Fe is still well-loved by its residents. The residents here, uh, value diversity. They value equity. They value quality of life. They want it to be a family-friendly community. So I, I think many of those things probably have not changed, right? But the context in which Santa Fe sits today in 2025 is very different than it was in 99, namely, technology. I myself am often a remote worker. That's completely different. Climate change, one of the biggest challenges of our time, is, um, now much more forward-facing and has a lot more public awareness around it. So the context in which the world of Santa Fe today sits in is quite different. And so as a result, we need to update the general plan to better reflect the current state of the world. Um, it allows us to better capitalize on opportunities, right? We want a prosperous community, and so with that, we need an updated general plan that understands how our economy works today and how we can best leverage our assets here. Um, and, you know, ultimately, a, a modern and updated general plan will help us address the challenges of today and also challenges that might be coming down the path that we don't know exactly they are right now. Lastly, benefits. A vision and a general plan, uh, can really go a long way in streamlining operations, as well as policy and decision-making at city level. So that's one of the top benefits, right? It's a, a north star in many ways for decision-makers, such as yourself, or such as the governing body, or such as administrative staff, to understand how, uh, the city should lay out implementation plans to achieve that collective vision. Again, it helps guide private and public investments, so both the public sector, but also private developers, they thrive in a world where there is certainty, where they know what to expect of the governance structure that they're operating with. Um, and Santa Fe is a, a community with a high quality of life, and there's also this recognition that maybe not everybody benefits from that quality of life equally or equitably, and so updating the general plan allows us the opportunity as a community to acknowledge that and take steps to making corrections in that way. So comprehensive plans, or in this case, the general plan, they often have sort of a standard suite of items that are included in them. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, there's a vision and, and goals and policy objectives that the plan includes. You know, generally, there is a physical form and function nexus to the general plan, so it's about our built environment broadly and all of the different policy areas that influence our built environment. Um, that also includes things like, how do we, uh, achieve economic growth? And what type of economic development are we looking for? What type of social services and policies does the city wanna support? How do we make sure that our air and our water and our landscapes are clean, um, and healthy moving forward? Uh, it also often covers policies related to public services. In other words, do we have enough fire stations? Do we need to increase police service in certain areas? What's the healthcare system like? Parks, right? Everybody loves parks and wants more of them. And along with that, facilities. Where are our libraries? Where are our schools? Are they sufficient? Are they high-quality? If not, what can we do to address that? And in a city like Santa Fe, especially, where culture, you know, drips from, from us in, in a way that is so easily recognizable, making sure that the plan really is centered on Santa Fe, our sense of place, our history, and what it means to be Santa Fans, is a key component of Santa Fe Forward, which is the name of our general plan effort right now. So, you know, ultimately, the goal is to prepare a plan that's resilient, it's sustainable, it's equitable, um, but it also speaks to and acknowledges and respects our heritage. It's ready to go now. It supports our needs now, but it also is forward. So that's, you know, this plan needs to do a lot of things, but that's okay. General plans can do a lot of things. And so as a first step in the process, first key milestone is the development of an assessment report. An assessment report is essentially an existing conditions analysis. So we evaluated housing, demographics, transportation. We evaluated current and existing, um, subsector plans, economic development plans, facilities plans, capital improvements plans. Uh, we have been collecting community input, and, uh, earlier this year in January, we provided a, a presentation to you that talked about what our public involvement process was gonna be. And so that's what we've been doing a lot of in 2025, is going out to the public and collecting their input and feedback. Um, we will be looking at, through this assessment report lens, what are those policy recommendations that might start to make sense? And one of the things that we did is we looked at the 1999 general plan, and we did a policy crosswalk. So we looked at which one of those 400-plus policies was the city successful in implementing? Which ones of those 400-plus policies did the city not have success in implementing or implementing fully? And what does that mean for our current context? We're also gonna be using the assessment report as a springboard to take us through scenario planning, and that's one of the upcoming steps. So we're gonna be looking at a variety of growth scenarios, a variety of economic scenarios, and then sort of gaming out, if you will, what future conditions might look like under those various scenarios. So as part of the initial stages of this plan, uh, we started collecting information, and we analyzed all of this existing conditions information, and we prepared a draft report. That report was made public on June 13th, um, and it was made available on our awesome website, santafeforward.org. Um, we also held an open house on Saturday, June 14th. So at that open house, the project team was available for more than four hours, uh, and we had more than 80 members of the public attend to learn more and, and provide their input. Um, and at that time, we also opened up a, a comment period. And then we are releasing a final assessment report. So we took a lot of input and a lot of guidance from, uh, both the public, but also city staff. It was a really robust team at the city that reviewed it in depth. Um, governing body members reviewed it, uh, and then, of course, our technical working group members reviewed it and provided hundreds of comments, um, and technical corrections on the assessment report. So all of that has been incorporated into the assessment report that you see in front of you, and that final version will go live sometime this fall. So on the screen, you can see just a, a brief snapshot of a lot of the resources that we use. So one of the key objectives of this assessment report was using publicly available data where we could. We wanted to be sure that if we were getting the data, others could get the data too. Of course, we had to assess the level of data and make sure it was accurate or sound, so that was a part of our method, and one of the ways that we did that was by using, um, trustworthy sources. So information from the Census Bureau, for example, the National Register of Historic Places, so on and so forth. You see a, a variety of the data sources that we used on screen. I also wanna highlight, this is not an exhaustive list, right? There are many hundreds of resources that were used, and a lot of coordination directly with the city to get that information. We also engaged civic leaders, so we engaged a number of folks from the city of Santa Fe, and you see some of their names listed there on the screen. Of course, the Planning and Land Use Department staff, such as Janice and Heather and Maggie, and of course, Dan and others, did a lot of heavy lifting and provided us with guidance and direction. Um, Mayor Weber also was very involved in reviewing the draft assessment report, and, and staff leads for more than 24 city departments also reviewed. I already mentioned our technical working group, our body of 16 technical experts with lived or professional experience in planning related topics, um, and they were extremely helpful and provided a lot of really robust assistance in developing the assessment report. We had a public comment period that ran from June 14th to July 20th. Um, it is a big body of work, so as you can see in front of you, it's more than 500 pages. Um, hard to imagine that many members of the public read all 500 pages. I would not expect them to. But one of the things that we did do is prepare a series of key findings upfront at the beginning of each one of those chapters or sections to give people the highlights, right? And then if they really wanted to dig in the data, the data was available for them to do so. So over the public comment period, we received, uh, 52 comments from an online forum and survey that we prepared. Um, we also had several, uh, dozen comments that were received in person at our open house on June 14th. All of the, uh, information and key highlights from the assessment report were prepared into these sort of one-page fact sheets. Um, and that's what you see on the screen there, a sample. Um, they were also prepared as boards at the open house, but they were posted online, so members of the public could go and find those easily. So here is a shot of our open house. Uh, you can see that we, uh, spread the word far and wide. So we posted it across social media. We also ran several dozen bilingual radio ads. We prepared bilingual newspaper ads in both the Santa Fe Reporter, as well as the New Mexican. We posted physical flyers at more than 20 public facilities and passed out hundreds of postcards, including giving a stack here to the city so that people could be aware. Um, and then we also have a newsletter that is linked to our Santa Fe Forward website, and that went out to over a thousand subscribers. I wanna be clear, the open house is not the only community participation that we conducted over the summer. Um, so starting on June 28th, coincidentally, Santa Fe Pride, um, the project team has been tabling around town. So so far this summer, since June 28th, we have spent more than 30 hours of tabling at more than 13 separate community events. We received more than 196 comments in person from those events and had 70 additional project distribution signups. Um, but I think the real value in that tabling and the reason why it's a, a key component of our engagement strategy is that because it allows us to have face-to-face discussions with folks that may not ordinarily be closely following planning work. And so going into the community, spending time with these folks in places they already planned to be or already spending time, um, we think is giving us more visibility and also more authentic experiences, rather than always asking folks to come to us. So it's just one of the many strategies that we're doing to sort of switch that dynamic. And here you can see a handful of photos, so, um, the, these are six photos from six different tabling events that we've been at, um, and hopefully, we've seen, uh, you guys around town sometime this summer, and if we haven't, we look forward to seeing you sometime this fall, because the tabling will continue. So at this point, I'm gonna hand it over to Amy, who will talk about key findings.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy DiCarlo Antonio. I work closely with Nikki W. I'm part of our national planning team, so my background as well. Um, I've been the task lead for this phase of the project for developing assessment reports. I'm very excited to be here today and this final step. Sorry, is that better? Better? I'm gonna just quickly go through, um, these next few slides as highlights for some of the key findings. As Nick mentioned, you know, you can see it's over 500 pages, but we did have key findings, um, within each section, right up front in each chapter, summarizing the trends, opportunities, challenges that we're really seeing as we were working through our analysis. Um, we also had, Nick also mentioned, we had fact sheets up on the website, and we have several boards that were prepared for the outreach as well. Um, so through that, we were able to synthesize, summarize some of these key findings into themes. So that's what I'm gonna go through right now. So we, we have eight themes, um, so as you can see on the screen, it goes from nature, climate, sustainability, and resiliency. We kind of grouped the, the key findings, common, common findings together, all the way through the built city, and then, of course, we have more of a community characteristics, demographics summary with the people, population, and income. So the first theme with nature, climate, sustainability, and resilience, um, there are several, a couple of key themes here, but overall, we're looking at, um, kind of thinking about co-benefits with not only conserving, preserving natural areas like the Santa Fe River, but really understanding that the importance of stewardship, and that also supports recreation, safety, habitat. Um, so we're looking at it from several different perspectives. Um, hillside protections, tree preservation, water quality improvements, all things that are continuing, um, but again, are essential to Santa Fe's future. Air and water quality are overall okay and good in the city. But again, placing emphasis for that to be maintained and enhanced moving forward into the future. And then as Nick mentioned too, in terms of trends, and of course, this is forward thinking, thinking about climate change and what the trends mean for more localized trends for Santa Fe and looking at risks such as drought, wildfire, flash flooding and extreme heat in the area. Community services and governance was the second theme. Though although the city is well covered by police and fire stations within about a one mile to a five mile radius, there is a concern with public safety that was brought up. Declining school enrollment is something that was discussed and definitely highlighted as a key metric that reflects demographic shifts, but also is exacerbated by affordability challenges and other reasons. We looked at healthcare in this theme, though healthcare access tends to be centralized within Santa Fe, but is further needed in South and West areas of Santa Fe. And then again, emphasis on thinking about coordination from a regional perspective going forward and what could be enhanced in terms of those relationships. Basic utilities, so this is anywhere from water through electricity, natural gas, communications, stormwater management. Overall, water is of course a key topic for Santa Fe. And so this was definitely a deep dive as part of the assessment report. Water management was found to be, you know, in a good place in terms of being well managed. But again, thinking through long-term risks for the city because this is a forward-thinking document. Looking at some significant investments for basic utilities, some improvements with consolidation with potential responsibilities within the city for stormwater management is an opportunity as well. And then continued waste reduction includes additional incentives and regulations if you're thinking in the future. Housing, social, economic opportunity. One key finding here is definitely one-third of Santa Fe households spend more than 30% of their income on housing. So that's both renters and homeowners. Overall, there's been a lot of steps towards more housing supply. But again, more housing supply could be needed, but really thinking about the variety of housing types when you're thinking about housing supply as part of the next steps and being future, future forward. And then other areas that were, you know, as part of this theme, thinking about the economic sector wages. Are they keeping up with the cost of living? And then thinking about economic diversification too in the future. Transportation and access to opportunity, thinking about mobility. Was found that there is a need for additional multimodal streets so that there's access for Almos from pedestrian cyclist transit and the automobile. There are some key corridors that were looked at, looking to close gaps in terms of active transportation. There's a lot of, in terms of sidewalks, trail network for pedestrians, but they're not always continuous. So looking at where those gaps are and where those gaps can be closed. Also looking at system-wide updates for the bus system in terms of frequency, especially on key routes, was a big topic area. And then of course, thinking about transportation in investment, investments in transportation, make sure, making sure it's aligned with other topics like housing, economic development, public spaces. History, culture and the arts, again, a very key theme for Santa Fe. So looking at the cultural identity, architectural character, you know, this is a community, these are definitely community assets. Thinking through historic preservation efforts in the future. Obviously, there's been a lot done within this city, but again, thinking about a balance that could potentially slow new development or restrict development, of course. And then thinking through how creativity and the innovation presents opportunity going forward in terms of investment in Santa Fe. The built city, of course, there is a variety of architecture and urban design. It does, the story does expand beyond the Santa Fe style. And there is auto-oriented development, different types of development when you're looking at the South and West areas. This is also tied to services, amenities, infrastructure, you know, that is also further needed on the South and West sides. And then looking at green space, how that contributes to the quality of life. And that also ties into some of the other themes we were talking about earlier. And then ending with kind of our community characteristics, the people, population, income, making sure we had documented all of where Santa Fe stands now, but also looking at some of the projections going forward. So overall, Santa Fe residents are older on average compared to some other peer cities we were looking at. Ethnic diversity in Santa Fe is definitely longstanding. And then looking at the population where it is now, but also where it is heading. So looking at it's projected to grow through 2040, but then plateau and decline. So taking that into account as we move forward with developing the policies will be important. And then there is a, also a displacement discussion and analysis within the report. So that goes into a lot of detail there, but looking at where there's potential pressure for displacement. Just a couple, a few more slides and then we can move on to the visioning and some of our interactive portion of the, of the evening. But a few other chapters that we had out of the 17 chapters in the assessment report, we did some additional analysis around development capacity, equity, and then the policy crosswalk that Nick already mentioned. So a quick snapshot of our development capacity analysis. And again, thinking about development, not only, you know, thinking about how that balances with preservation, investment areas. So again, kind of all of that needs to be taken into account. We're looking at, it was identified that over 5,000 acres of vacant land plus another thousand of underutilized land was found through this analysis. There's definitely redevelopment opportunities distributed across the city. Our equity analysis initially identified 11 census tracts as equity communities. We are looking at three main areas in terms of, from our equity analysis in terms of household, transportation and environmental health burdens. Those were some of the key factors of the analysis. So you can see just a quick snapshot here of those census tracts that were identified as equity communities. This was one of our last chapters. So there's a few last comments that we are looking at with the city. So this will be part of the final publication on the website. And then the last chapter is the policy implications. So again, looking at the previous plan, the 1999 general plan, what was implemented? What was partially implemented? What remains ongoing? And also looking how that then is crosswalked to some of the key themes we were seeing through our findings in the assessment report. So that's all documented in the final chapter. So with that, I know that was a really quick run-through, but hopefully that gives you a quick snapshot of those key findings. But again, we have the fact sheets up on the website and then the full list, which is about page or two pages for each chapter, if you want to dive in and go into specific detail for some of the topics. So with that.
Okay. Well, thanks for that, Amy. Really appreciate it. We definitely do want to give you guys some time to ask us questions. If you have anything that you'd like to clarify, we are available, the entire project team. I should also mention in the room, we have a handful of other task leads. We've got four team members from two of our subconsultant partners, Leland Consulting Group and Design Workshop in the room with us this evening. We also have our public involvement task lead. His name is Christian. I know the technical working group members will recognize that name. Christian is here as well. And then I will also let you know that we have a WSP videographer in the room, Manny, who's in the back. Throughout tonight's session, Manny might be taking some video to document it for the record and make sure that we're able to document and tell the story of the general plan as we move forward, as well as shooting some still photographs. But yeah, if you have any concerns about being in any shots, please just let Manny know. And then before we get into questions, just a quick overview of what we'll do after you're done with questions. We're going to go into a visioning charrette. So it's really more of a mini visioning charrette, but there's two modules. So what we're going to ask of everyone in the room, if you are a planning commission member or if you are a technical working group member is to, for module one, select one of the four tables. You're going to have facilitators at each one of the tables and we're going to ask you to give us some of your values. So just scribble on some post-it notes, hand those into us. And then we're going to go through a future headlines exercise and your facilitators will walk you through that prompt. When that session is done, we'll go ahead and take a stretch break. We can synthesize and everybody can walk around the room, look at those headlines that have been generated. We also have some light refreshments in the back, so please help yourself. And then we'll come back together for module tool two, excuse me. Again, we'll be at the breakout tables. At that point, we're going to ask about implementable actions to make those headlines a reality. So we'll spend the last half of our working session together, actually getting into the nitty-gritty about, okay, what can the city or what can the community do to bring those headlines, those future headlines to life? Okay. And then we'll wrap up with next steps. Also, I just ask if there are any members of the public in the room, you are certainly welcome to observe. This is a working session though, for a planning commission and the technical working group members. So in the back, we have some survey forums that we invite members of the public to use and participate on. And then of course, connect with us, the project team on the project website because we'd like to chat with you. But for tonight, let's keep it focused on the planning commission members and the technical working group. So with that, Janice, should we go into questions? Okay, great. Questions?
I, I have one, but it's just, it's more formulaic. Could we have the deck that was just shown to us shared with us electronically individually?
Yes, we can send that out following tonight.
Thank you for the presentation. In your analysis, what gave you all the conclusion that we're going to see a population decline in 2040 and thereon?
Yes, great question. Well, luckily, the folks who did the population analysis are in the room. So I might invite one of them to come down and add any additional thoughts. But I think there's a couple of things at play. One is we know that birth rates generally are declining across the nation, even though people are living longer. And then there's this outstanding question about what the long-term impacts of immigration will look like. And that's a little bit of an unknown. So certainly there is some good speculation that's needed to arrive at that population forecast. But it is, it is done with some significant number crunching. Andrew, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, come on down. Hello, everyone. Andrew Oliver with Leland Consulting Group. Nice to be here with you all. Yes, it was mostly based initially on the state forecast and the, what the state had forecast for Santa Fe County as a starting point. And then we sort of did an analysis of looking at birth and death rates and migration in the county and the city and generated three sort of forecast ranges, low, medium and high. The high forecast does have a continued increase, a slower rate of increase, but still an increase of population over the planning period. But the, the general trend of household formation and birth versus death rates in the city has been pretty consistently moving negative over the past 10 years and especially past five years. And so that was, that was the, the main, you know, basis for the forecast. And then also, yeah, like Nick said, uncertainty about migration, both internally within the country and also international migration. So all those factors that in the, I think it's chapter three, there's a sort of outline of all those things and the factors and the graphs you can see separately. But that's, that's the main points here.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like you guys did a very thorough analysis. And I kind of look at it from my perspective in the sense of doing real estate here and that we do still have a very good quality of life. And in one of your slides, you showed that our population base is an older population, which we do find. But as long as Santa Fe, in contrast to other major cities, our quality of life and our actual living expenses, although everybody's going to disagree with me, we are still considered a very affordable city. So I'm just kind of making sure that that was taken into consideration in your analysis.
Yes, and I think also to that point, there is a considerably less decline in population here in the city compared to the county and state. So that's, that's one way that it factors in. But I also think that, you know, we talked to the mayor a lot too during the workshop and other times about the fact that just because the population is forecast to increase more, more slowly and peak during this planning period, doesn't mean that there's not a need for like a wider variety of housing types and things, you know, for various segments of the public.
First of all, thank you for all the work you all did. This is amazing and very exciting work. I have some, I guess my question has to do with the community or the public involvement process. And maybe more of the detail of it is in here. Need to get into it more in the book. But I guess the 13 events, you went to the open house. Curious where they were, how they match up to other places. You've done this process and as far as involvement, I mean, 52 comments and the, the data would seem a little small in this part of it and just, you know, what, what, Santa Fe is kind of a unique spot. And how you've approached that uniqueness?
Yeah, really great questions and a message that we've heard loud and clear from city staff, from governing body, also planning commission back in January, we heard this as well. It's really important to reach folks broad and wide. And so the tabling events is just one of the many methods that we are using to reach folks. So in terms of the tabling events, we have a summary of all the locations that we visited available on Santa Fe Forward.org and we are always happy to provide additional details. Those events are sort of coordinated and planned with input and guidance from the city. So it starts with us doing some desktop research to see what type of events are out there and then making decisions in conjunction with the city on which ones are going to be sort of the ones that are maybe most valuable to reach in terms of audiences that we know we need to do a better job connecting with or opportunities for us to go out and share. So for example, some of the events in addition to Pride that we were at were Feria South Side, the teen block party and back to school event over at the teen center on the south side, Low Rider event as well. So we're really trying for a variety of multicultural events. So it's not just us showing up to, for example, the rail yards farmer's market every week, right? Where that draws a certain crowd. We're trying to get into the types of events where different folks go. Folks that traditionally are not at the planning table or involved in the same way. But it is true, right, that we can only do so much in conducting face-to-face conversations with folks at these types of events, especially around really, really dense technical material. So one of the things that we are also doing is working hand-in-hand with our community partners program. That is a program that is modeled after some work that has been done in the city of Santa Fe already, but also other models around the country where we are compensating and partnering with community-based organizations that have a much closer authentic relationship with audiences that are particularly difficult for the city and planning processes like these to reach. So we're asking that they essentially carry the message for us, right? And we're supporting them by doing that through compensation of mini grants, preparing them with talking points and outreach toolkits. We're also not asking them to conduct their conversations with their community members or their constituents in specific ways. They are empowered to talk about the general plan update process and its benefits and why it may be useful for their constituents to be involved in a way that will make sense for them, their language, their methods. And then of course, we have a really robust online presence as well. And then, of course, we have a really robust online presence as well through social media and the use of Santa Fe Forward. We've had over 10,000 website visits to santafeforward.org. The website is widely known across the country as being one of the most engaging comp plan websites out there right now, certainly in the country. So it's getting a lot of visibility outside of New Mexico for, for that reason, in addition to all the good substantive work that is being done. And we received well over 800 comments by now, maybe more than 1,000 comments by now on the website alone. So we are finding that, you know, this multi-pronged method and multi-path method of reaching folks is one way that we're mitigating any sort of shortcomings in any one specific method. So hopefully that helps.
Yeah, that is really helpful and kind of paints a bigger picture, I think. Is there, is that part of this process needed? Or is there going to be more public engagement moving forward? And are there going to be kind of new avenues to try to and prod the groups? I think there's a lot of, I think since COVID, really, Santa Fe got more online in ways and on groups, groups have formed and things where people are home and available time, stuff like that, or at workplaces, just really getting out there to people. And it sounds like you're doing a lot of that. So thank you for explaining more.
Yeah. Short answer is yes and yes. The public involvement process is nowhere near complete. It will continue over the entire lifecycle of the process. We are reaching a zenith in public involvement right now, because as we're about to see here with our work session, we're headed into visioning, and that's really where we find people are most engaged and interested in. You know, the data is the data, right? But what they really want is to provide their input and guidance to us on what they want to see. So we're reaching a zenith now. We are doing a lot of public engagement digitally as well as in person right now through November. It will taper off after that as we get closer and closer to implementation, but there will still be public involvement opportunities. So, yeah.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
I have one more question. You were talking about using, I'm going to, my term, community groups to communicate out to people. We also are aware of a number of studies and sets of recommendations that are being made by individual and collective community groups as to what should be considered when it comes to density, housing, all sorts of things by which this commission is interested. Are you taking, I'm not advocating for them or not, that's, that's not my job. Are you paying attention to those studies and recommendations of groups of professionals or other advocates who are representing populations who are less likely, frankly, historically, regardless of all the things we try to do, are less likely to show up in public and have an opinion?
Yes. So short answer is yes, we are considering that, and we certainly are open to including that throughout the entire project lifecycle, including in both visioning, which is the phase that we're about to go through now, as well as scenario planning, the development of the plan itself, and then, of course, implementation. So yes, I mean, the, the, the key is that we need to receive those recommendations. And so our hope is that through our robust public outreach opportunity, we are making the request well-known, that we want people to participate, we want their input, we want them to send us their suggestions, so that we, as the project team, can carefully consider them. There's the website, of course, the community-based organizations through our community partner program, and through our technical working group as well, who are bringing a lot of these sort of community concerns that maybe they're aware of in different ways to apply technical aspects of the plan, especially though not exclusively related to zoning, housing, land use, transportation. They are bringing that to this work through the use of the technical working group as well. So I think there's a variety of ways that that can occur, and the answer is yes.
Other? Amy, what's, oh. Hey, boss. How are you?
You knew I was not, not going to be able to speak. So I just, I'm really grateful for Dan and Janice to taking the mantle. I just got back into town, but the preparation for all of this has been phenomenal. The one thing that I would also say is that we're really trying to reach out to our partners at Chusuke Pueblo, and they have been active with the technical working group. In a minute, we're going to go around, introduce the, the group, so you know who is part of the technical working team, which has been fabulous. Unfortunately, at Chusuke Pueblo Partners had an event tonight, religious event, so they couldn't. So, but we are consistently reaching out to them as part of this.
Thank you. Amy.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Dan. Before we get started, could we have the technical working group come up to the podium and introduce themselves to the planning commission, one at a time? That would be... Okay, you can shout it out. That way they know you are before you break up. Thank you. We'll start on this side. If you'll just...
Well, with that, we don't want to rush you any more questions, but we definitely want to get to our visioning charrette as well. No?
I'm Kelly McReynolds.
TJ Reeland.
Peter Smith.
Miranda.
Hi, Bert Kepin.
Hey. Hey, are we ready to go ahead and break out? Okay, thanks, everyone. So, everybody get up. We will have you guys go to tables. This is a real informal session, so please take care of yourself. Excuse yourself at any time to go to the bathroom, step out, take a call, grab some refreshments. We have water, lemonade, snacks up at the back. And then what we'd like to do is if, there's, so there's four stations. There's two down here, and then there's two up there. So if we can have everybody kind of mix and mingle, and maybe not all cluster at one table if you're part of the same, you know, thing. So like maybe a planning commissioner here, there.
...
Okay, so for those of you that may have missed it, grab a sheet of dots and walk around the room. Take a look at all of the boards and place a dot next to anything that resonates with you headlines, values, et cetera. We ' ll do this for about ten minutes and we ' ll come back together in breakout groups at seven fifty. The colors do not mean anything. Like like all the colors here, they mean nothing. Okay, folks, hopefully you ' ve had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you ' ve all walked around. We ' re gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Oh, oh, can they not hear me up there? Okay. Okay, folks, hopefully you ' ve had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you ' ve all walked around. We ' re gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Oh, oh, can they not hear me up there? Okay. Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. And then we ' ll come back and we ' ll go uh do a gallery walk. Okay, everyone? Okay, folks, sorry to interrupt all of you. Let ' s take a stretch break. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table. Okay, folks. Hopefully you've had a chance to get some refreshment. Hopefully you've all walked around. We're gonna go into our second module now. So go ahead and if you wanna stay at your same table, you can, but you are certainly encouraged to pick a different table.
Hey, are we all reconvened? Hey. Well, great. Well, thank you, everyone. First off, I want to offer my appreciation to everybody in the room for all of the good work and the good thinking that you all did this evening. It's really instructful and useful to the project team, and we really appreciate your time. We know it's a long evening, so we'll go ahead and get wrapped up here. Um, I want to cover a few next steps, but I think what we could do um to help get us towards closing before we cover next steps is quickly go around the room if you guys agree and um share one takeaway from this evening, something that you uh really appreciated, something that you're going to take with you out of this room tonight. We'd love to hear that. So maybe we can start up here with Chair Smith. Or you can direct us.
Okay, and then we're gonna go right down the line and then uh the deeper we got into it, the more I kept hearing, think differently about everything, think differently about local, think differently about what it means to regulate. Don't not do it, but think differently, innovate, create community. To me, that was pretty cool.
I think there's um, there's a lot of great minds in here, um, and a lot of spirited individuals, and that's great to see so many varying parts and minds in here. Um, my biggest takeaway was um, we have a lot of work to do, and if we stay the course, we can get it done.
Yeah, I agree. I think um, there was a lot of, a lot of like minds and a lot of differing, differing opinions simultaneously, but all working towards the same goal to think about Santa Fe's future, community, sustainability, and how we can hopefully avoid that population decline. It felt like we were like working towards building a bigger and better city, so that's nice.
I would say just the community involvement, having you guys here participating, taking the time out of your days to help out with this process that's much overdue. So, thanks.
Yeah, I was just really impressed with the quality of the working group and that um, we weren't necessarily of like minds on any one issue at all, but that um, there was this uh to uh piggyback on what Chair Smith started us with this idea of uh trying to innovate and find uh new and effective ways to uh solve, solve the problems Santa Fe has in front of us. I'm tired.
My words are pretty done too. Um, my brain's not doing the thing, but I really appreciated this. I think we do have a big amount of work to do ahead of us, but it's exciting work, and it feels really timely, and um, there's just a ton of opportunity to do really interesting, amazing things here, and uh, I'm really grateful to be a part of it.
Great. Thank you all. Um, and now from our TWG members, so Kent, maybe we can start with you in the back and then we can kind of cascade down. Dan? Perfect. Frank? Maury, we'll go to you next. Lap? Cube? Hala? Cube, come. Great. Thanks, Nathan. And Donna in the back? Great, thank you. Well, I want to be sure that we hear from the city as well, so I'll hand it over to them for closing remarks here momentarily. But just um for a quick update on next steps, the project team is gonna take every note, every scribble, every post-it note and dot next to a word or a phrase on all of these flip charts, we're gonna synthesize it together. Um, we're gonna go ahead and prepare an analysis of that synthesis, and that will be available to you um sometime, we imagine, in late October, so we look forward to sharing that with you. Um, by the way, we are also doing this process, and by this process, I don't necessarily mean a charrette like this, but we are also asking the public what their vision is, what are their priorities, what things keep them up at night, what do they imagine for the future of Santa Fe. And so we're also going through that synthesis process with the public input that we're receiving as well, and all of this will get pulled together into what will eventually be Santa Fe's vision for Santa Fe Forward, um, which we hope will be available sometime later this fall or in early winter. Um, so those are the next steps, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions, but if not, turn it back over to Heather for closing statements.
Thank you, Nick. Um, so we're really excited that we were able to connect and to meet and discuss all of these things. There's a lot of homework there, and um I imagine that once it gets distilled and um, we'll be, Nick, a quick question to you, reporting back to the group, correct? So um, do you know in the next month or so, the, there should be some sort of
Yeah.
minutes of the play, of the session?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll prepare, excuse me, I'm sorry about that. We'll prepare a high-level summary of what's occurred here tonight um relatively soon, so Heather, we can give that to you soon as next week, if that's useful. Um, and then, like I said, the actual synthesis of all of the information that's been prepared here, that'll take a little bit more time, uh, and we expect that that will be available in late October.
Okay, yes. Okay, yes. So then that's really a great sign of things to come. You know, there's a lot of activity with the general plan update, as well as with the land development code update. So this commission is going to be busy in the coming months. So not only have we added the study sessions before the commission hearings, but also we anticipate and schedule for the second meeting of the month to be happening, you know, regularly. So there's, you know, if the line development code or some form thereof comes, then we will probably do an extra study session on the L D C, because the last time you guys picked up, and most of you, there's some new ones, picked up the book, it's been a while. So I think what we need to do is also maybe provide a presentation on what is in the code, what's been updated, what the affordable housing incentives are and the like. So we will be using all of the time through the end of the year, you know, two meetings a month. And so thank you for your time, and I know that this commission really wants to be very active. And so that's why we're having a commission meeting for our twig visioning session. So and probably the commission will, just because of quorum issues, will want to remain active. So you might have several meetings in the near future also that would involve the commission as well. So, which is really exciting to have a commission so involved. And we're missing two commission members, but I'm sure that you'll meet them next time, so that aren't present today.
And just one thing, listening to you made me think that with all of this information, you probably have your own language, and I'm sure you would do this, but to make sure we have desired outcomes, but as Dan Pava was saying, and several other people, are we going to get there? Because if we don't know what the final destination is, and we can't back, sort of reverse engineer it to today, and understand what are the kinds of recommended changes, which may be controversial, but if we don't get aggressive with our solutions being the ones we think will get us there, then when we, as we compromise, which we will, we need to know the consequences of the compromises we're making. So often, in my experience in politics, in a much less complicated place, we lose our way because we never had a map of what would be desirable. Does that make any sense?
Does, and thank you for the note and the flag. We're excited to also note that the general plan update process includes the development of an implementation and action strategic plan towards the end of the process, so it's forthcoming.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from members of the commission? Kind of their motion, is it appropriate? Oh, Dr. Escobal.
I just want to remember that the October 2nd meeting is going to be rough. And I'm hoping that all of you are going to be here in attendance, so that I have a quorum, because, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't ask you to bring your sleeping bags.
Yes, sir. Yes, a question.
Two study sessions we're doing ahead of meetings, how will we know which meetings have that at five and which are going to be at six, like tonight? Would that be, will we get that separate email or agenda about that hour?
Yeah, Commissioner Capen. And regularly, it will be at 5 o'clock. This is just sort of a unique situation.
Yeah, no, no.
So unless the commission, it's the pleasure of the commission to actually, on the study session days, that there's no cases, if you prefer the 6 o'clock hour, we can talk about it.
So I just want to make sure I.
Let's talk about it. With Chair Clow, I know she's very interested in both. Your motion to adjourn? Oh, that's right, we're doing, oh, God, I love it!